Good evening. This is the Cortez City Council Special Meeting. We have, today is Tuesday, Nov- or October 29th, 2024, and the time is 5:45 PM. We have in attendance with us some of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And this is a joint special, or no, this is a City Council meeting for the Land Use Code update.
I guess it doesn't move, does it? All right. Mayor, Council Members, Planning Commission, thanks for having us tonight. We're back to give you an update on what we've been doing on the Land Use Code. So we have a very healthy stack of slides to go through. We have some points to pause, so we'll go through some things, pause, have some discussion, like we've done in the past. Yeah, is it still hard to hear? I thought it would bend down. There we go. Is that better? Okay. I can speak up too. I was talking quietly. Which my family would say never happens. Okay. Our agenda for tonight is to go over the three chapters that encompass Module Two. And that's Chapter Four Subdivision Standards, Chapter Five Site Development Standards, and Chapter Seven Historic Preservation. We'll also go over, at the end, we have just one slide on Chapter Six, which is the application procedures to show you kind of the plan and where we're headed with that. Maybe there's two slides on that. And then, just a reminder, we had an open house today at, from 12 to 2 at the Chamber. We actually had, I think, 12 or 13, 15, we ended up with 15 people. We had some really great conversations, mostly people just asking what the code was about, asking questions about. I had quite a conversation with a couple who were just curious about what, what do the subdivision standards even do? Like, how, how do they work? What do they apply to? And so, it was great. It was kind of, I think, more than anything educational. We had a couple folks there that have come to previous open houses and did weigh in and give some feedback. So, all in all, it was all positive feedback. We have another open house tomorrow evening in this room, I think, 5 to 7. So just, just as a reminder to everyone, Module One is what we've gone through in the past, which was the Zone Districts and Use Standards and General Provisions with the non-conforming regulations. That is, for all intents and purposes, kind of, the initial drafts are wrapped up with all the comments that we've received throughout the drafting of that module. It will be released again with the whole code when we release everything prior to adoption for the public to review. Module Two, we're discussing this evening, and then Module Three, we have started to move into in the background. So we're, we're making pretty good progress. So Module Two is, I think we've gone over this before, just to give you guys a heads up of what was coming. But Chapter Four is the subdivision standards. It includes lot and block standards, street design standards, easement standards, development reports, public land dedications, required improvements, subdivision improvement agreements, improvement guarantee standards, and a section that used to be called impact fees. We can, actually, we can go over that a little bit tonight. It's, we've changed the name of that since. Chapter Five Site Development Standards includes parking, driveways and access, sidewalk standards, fences and walls, landscaping and screening, natural resource protections, exterior lighting, signs, and performance standards. And then Chapter Seven is just historic preservation. So we're going to walk through some of the highlights of what we've changed in these individual sections. The subdivision standards, there's, there's a fair bit of language that substantively remained where the substance, the policy, the standards were working well. But there was a lot of language that was very lengthy, that we've kind of clarified, reduced, but kept kind of the overall intent. There are some sections that we have proposed changes on. We've clarified minor subdivisions are four lots or less, and major subdivisions are anything over four lots of subdivision. There's, there's some language in the code right now that speaks to that, but we've brought that forward at the forefront of subdivision, so it's clear. As soon as you start developing a subdivision, you know which one you're, which, which category you're in. There were some very minimal updates to lot and block standards, like I said, mostly just cleaning up language, clarifying the language that was there. The biggest change is the existing lot length, I believe is 400 feet in the code, which does encompass the, the properties, kind of the area right around downtown, but does not accommodate some of the newer subdivisions which have longer blocks. So it's, it's very common to have a block length closer to 800 or 1,000. We, we settled on 1,000. But said, if you're going to have a lot that long, you need to break it up in the middle so that there's some access through the middle of the lot, or the block. We did update the street standards for consistency with the master streets plan. This is probably where we spent a fair bit of our time in this chapter. There's the master street plan and the city's construction specifications. We wanted to make sure they were all consistent. And then, also consistent with best practices. The current code, we, we've added a table to highlight all the different dimensional standards, and you'll see that here in a second. We've reduced the lane width on local roads to 10 feet from 12 feet, and added a private street standards. And the private street standards are already in the code, a little bit in the PUD section. We've pulled them out of the PUD and highlighted them here so that they're with all the other street standards. Yeah, absolutely.
When you say you reduced the lane width, that's still keeping the rideaway the same, and that's accommodating for maybe like parking or bike lanes?
Yes, absolutely. You'll see that here in a second. We've created graphics to try to highlight all of that and really walked through what these numbers mean. So here's just a snapshot of the table. I have sections of this table on each of the next slides. So you'll see for alleys, I believe we kept the dimensions for alleys, which would have a rideaway width of 20 feet and the minimum pavement curb to curb of 15 feet. But we just have an illustration in here. Private roads, again, like I said before, there was some language on private roads in the PUD standards that we've pulled over here because they could apply outside of a PUD. They could apply to a standard subdivision as well. And we have proposed that the, a private road would not be in a rideaway. It would be in a lot or tract that would be owned by the HOA or a metropolitan district. And we've identified a 36-foot dedicated tract or lot. And then within that, you can see two 10-foot travel lanes and then sidewalk and curb and gutter. And we can come back to any of these as, if, during discussion.
I just had a question. Private roads still have the same sidewalk standards as our city roads?
Yes, we have them slated to be the same as the city roads.
Okay, cool.
So this is, this hopefully answers your question, Mayor Medina, that we have a couple different options for local roads. In, in most of our experience and, you know, looking around the city of Cortez, the local roads are typically where you see on-street parking. They're in your neighborhoods. People are parking on the street. So the top illustration shows your two travel lanes plus parking space and then the sidewalks. And then the bottom illustration is the same with the addition of a bike lane. We do have the bike lane set at a six-foot width. The important part about the bike lane is there's language, and you, I think you guys have all kind of looked at the draft language. It's right before the street section, and it speaks to bike lanes being optional. If the city does adopt a multimodal plan that would maybe require bike lanes on the street, then it would be required. But if, if a subdivision were to put in a bike lane, this is the, the dimensions that would be required.
And then, can I just interrupt you and mention that this is now a joint council and planning and zoning meeting, now that the planning and zoning has a quorum, just for the public's sake?
Awesome.
Thank you.
Yep.
I have a question.
Yeah, absolutely. She's green.
So I know that there's a lot of research now about those bike lanes actually being relatively ineffective at protecting the cyclists. So if the bike lane is going to be optional, can we make it more protected? If they do put it in, so that there's actually a strip of concrete, like a physical barrier between the cyclist and the vehicle?
We certainly could. Yeah, if, if that was the, the kind of general consensus on that. And another thing that we could do is include in this that this would be the minimum standard, but we could do a little kind of illustration that says, you know, you could, a preferred option is to buffer that in some way. A lot of people are just striping it too. I, I don't know. I find it somewhat protected, but having that, I think it's about a two-foot double stripe before the bike lane. So, the little posts, yeah, that makes you feel much more secure. Great. We'll take note of that. Collectors, similarly, we've identified that most of the collectors, you typically have a center turn lane. So we have two travel lanes, a center turn lane, sidewalk, curb and gutter. And then the, the bottom illustration is what would, what you would do if you were to put on-street parking in a collector situation.
Do we have anything?
Sorry. Okay.
Do we have anything about medians? Not to trigger anybody, but there are small subdivisions, you know, rodeo subdivision, which is like Harrison Street, south of Empire. They have a, a median, and there may be subdivisions that propose them, so I don't know if we need any language for that, or if, since it's a private subdivision, I don't know.
Yeah. We could certainly put some language in there and have a third option with a median. Do you think we need to be accommodating, I think it would just be a, a concrete median, right? Not a planted median, or do we want to talk about planted medians?
I mean, the one in rodeo subdivision is planted.
Is planted?
But then they subcontract the city to maintain it.
Okay.
Which is, you know, I think less than ideal sometimes, but.
Sure. That's, that's great. Then we would need to establish a certain width for that to accommodate the plant material, so, so they have the best.
You know, and then would that count towards landscaping requirements, or, yeah. But I also don't want them, like, the, the land that they dedicate to the city, I don't want it to be the median.
Right.
So.
Okay. Yep, nope, I'm right there with you. Okay, perfect. Yeah, Michaela and I went through a number of scenarios, detached sidewalks, attached sidewalks. We were trying to figure out how much we needed to truly illustrate. So there is language in there about if you do detach the sidewalk, how wide that parkway strip would need to be. I think it's similar to, to medians. We'd want to make sure the median's a certain width if it's going to accommodate plant material. Okay. Good thoughts. Arterials are fairly straightforward. Again, I mean, you guys have a median on an arterial street, but it's a C dot right away, I believe, so. But we have four-lane arterials to get to the different dimensions that we've laid out in here. So all that to say, some of the rideaway widths did change, and that was just based on really laying out the lanes and the sidewalks. When we first started to do these illustrations, we put in the, the existing rideaway and lane widths, and there was a ton of leftover space, and we said, what is that even supposed to be for? So let's put logic into place, and if you actually do two lanes, curb and gutter, sidewalk, what, what does that really look like? So, so that was kind of our reality check on the road standards.
And I just want to check with the, the street types, does that match our master streets plan? And do, do we define that?
Yes.
Okay.
Great. Yeah, it, it matches the, the names, classifications in the master street plan, and then obviously the mapping that goes along with that.
And chances are, we're not going to have any more arterials going through Cortez, but we wanted to have it just in case.
All right. The other thing of note, and it might be on my next slide. Did I go over the sidewalks yet? The current, hold on, let me just look ahead here. I don't want to get ahead of myself. Okay. The existing sidewalk widths in the code are nine feet, I believe, for CBD, five feet for commercial, and four feet for residential. We had a lengthy discussion on that and have decided to increase the residential to five feet, realizing that you have some three-foot, four-foot sidewalks in the older parts of Cortez. So there's some language in there on how, how we would transition those. So if you had a block and the whole block face was a three-foot sidewalk, and there was one undeveloped parcel in the middle, we wouldn't require that, that one parcel member to increase to the five foot. You would just leave it three foot. However, if the whole block face is being redeveloped from street to street, then that would trigger increasing to the new five-foot sidewalk. So that's how we've accommodated kind of the, how to work with the existing condition, and then obviously new subdivisions would need to meet the five foot. Which is very standard American of disabilities, with disabilities access ADA requirements. So the other changes in Chapter Four, we, we looked through all the easement standards. I don't think we made a whole lot of changes. They were pretty well, the easement widths were pretty well set. We talked to a couple of developers and the engineering department and Public Works, and they said they're, they're fine. We provided a little bit of clarification. We have added, in the development report section, some clarification on drainage and erosion control reports. We did, we did meet with an engineer today at the open house, and he said, you know, do you mention a couple of things? One of them being mile high drainage, which is who, kind of the, the upper tier of who manages drainage in the area, and we, and it is in there. So he said, great. And we mentioned the city of Cortez specifications, and so he said, well, I think we're probably covered. But I asked him to just take a look from his perspective, you know, if you were developing and you had all these resources, were we missing anything? So hopefully we'll get some feedback on that. We did overhaul the public land dedication section. And what I want to point out is your current land dedication section talks about 5% dedication for public land. But then later in the document, or in that section, it talks about an 80%, 20% split between parks and rec and the school district. So we've broken those out into two individual sections based on your current metrics because it would require a, a bigger study to change those numbers at this time. Basically, your current code is talking about 4% dedicated to parks and open space and 1% to schools. So we've kept those numbers and really reduced that section to say, you know, the, the, when you're dedicating land, there's the option of fee and lieu as well. And that can come at the very beginning of the process from you all to say, you know, that little slice of land is not beneficial to the purpose of this, so we would prefer that fee and lieu. Most developers are doing a fee and lieu anyway, but there is language in there that gives you all the option to say, we need this in one space, or that trail doesn't connect to anything, so there's some, some flexibility in there to work on that. Any questions on that? You're going to try April's?
The public land dedication, I mean, typically it is fee and lieu. I mean, I can't think of one.
Yeah, well, in the three years that I've been here, we haven't done any subdivisions like this, so I would say, it's been a while.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Yeah, and I don't think our developers were too happy with what it says in the code, so.
Yeah, I agree. I think that was kind of the barrier, and hope, find by me. The other do it the other way, honestly.
The only question I had about that was clarifying that it's the city's option, not the developer's option.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes. I think we say it in two places, right at the beginning, and then there's another location that refers back to that. And we tried to clarify in that section as well, what would be considered usable park and open space land, without getting too descrip, you know, too prescriptive, so. So that should help that section quite a bit. I'm trying to think if there's anything else in that section. Oh, we did do a little bit of research. There is a fee listed on your fee sheet, which is what we're referring to in the code. That was updated in, by Planning Commission, 20?
Last updated, it looks like in 2021, so we're bringing it back to Planning Commission to update it again for this coming year.
Yep. All right. Let's see here. We added, added to required improvements. So the required improvements were kind of peppered throughout this section. We've pulled them all into one section and added some things that are just really common in, in subdivision codes that you need to set lot pins and monuments when you're establishing a lot. You know, how to, how to deal with streets, utilities, drainage, fire suppression, fire hydrants, and erosion control. We added standards for acceptance of those improvements that tie to the new improvement guarantee section. So the whole thought process on this is establish what is a required improvement, how you are, how those get approved by the city, and then there's an improvement guarantee that's posted, and once the city accepts these improvements, that guarantee is released. So, so those two sections tie to each other. We added a new development improvement agreement standard section. There is, in, in the existing code, there's a, an appendix for a development improvement agreement, but there was no language that specified how that came about. So we've just added the language to support the appendix. And then, as I said, we added a new improvement guarantee standard where a contractor would post 125% guarantee of the public improvement. So the purpose of that is to ensure that the streets and, and infrastructure are installed, and if a developer walks from the site, then they've posted that guarantee that the city can either take, you know, if it's just dirt that's been moved around, they can take that back to original state, or if they've already started construction, the city can hire a contractor and whatnot with that money and complete the infrastructure. The impact fees, uh, we didn't do a whole lot in that section. Actually, we did do a whole lot in that section now that I think about it. Um, it's la- labeled impact fees, but it was really a section that looks like it's, was intended for a public private partnership. We did a little research on that to figure out kind of where it came from, simplified it way down and said, really, it's a development agreement that, or development improvement agreement is where that would take place. So the option is still there, but we've just simplified that down. It, the current language was something about a fee that's assessed to each property owner based on, say, a special median or some special, you know, detail that is added to a subdivision. And we said, that's really just something that's negotiated through a development improvement agreement. So simplified that language quite a bit. And if anyone has any background on that or. Um, felt it was appropriate to take that section.
Um, I guess I just have a question. We have a, a lot of subdivisions that were platted, you know, right before the crash. So like two thousand five, two thousand six. And there was no bond for those roads. So say, you know, some of those lots are, they've sold and there's a bunch of owners now. But sometimes they're still owned by a lot of people. So if they were to re, replat that and make kind of a new subdivision, would that trigger the standards?
Yes.
Okay.
In fact, we had a couple that were asking about that today. And I, and the way I'm thinking about this, and we are getting into the application procedures next, which will really trigger kind of how that process would work. My thought is if they're not replating it, they're building off of the existing final plat that was approved. And someone comes back in and, you know, purchases that whole parcel, they could build off of the previous code. If they're actually replating or doing anything different, then they would fall under this new code and post the bond. All right. Any other questions or comments in chapter four? Yes, we do. And I can't remember what that one was. Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, there's this.
Yeah, we did have a couple of questions in the document. One of them was, um, in that land dedication fee, which I can go back to maybe, oh, look, I can see it now. Um, we do have a couple of items that would be exempt from this. And one of them was thinking about affordable workforce housing. Is that the one or was it? Yeah. Um, whether we should provide a reduction in any fees to accommodate affordable workforce housing. Um, realizing that, you know, you still could have families moving in that would contribute to, you know, the, um, open space and schools potentially. So it was just something we thought we'd pose to this group.
I thought that made sense to help us incentivize like our affordable housing. And that's something that's been one of our priorities since.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the question I had with that is do we have through our land use code, full control of rebating that one percent to schools? Or is that set by the school district or through the school district through the county? Do we have the ability to, to do anything with that?
Hmm. Pat, you're on deck.
Yeah, um, it, since it's in our code and we're collecting it, we, we give it, you know, we, we make, make it clear that the school fee and lieu goes to the schools, a hundred percent of it. So we don't have discretion to use it for some other purpose. And generally, most of the ones I've seen actually require the government to negotiate with the schools and, and let them decide whether they want land or a fee. Because we, we don't want to take land and the school district tells us, well, we don't want to put a school in that location. So usually there, I've seen it done through an IGA or MOU where the, the, the two entities get together. And it, it would be very unlikely in Cortez. It takes a pretty large subdivision to, uh, have enough land that would be essentially five percent of the total subdivision size to constitute sufficient land for a school. So I, I'm not sure we would ever get a land dedication unless it was right next to land the school already owns, perhaps. Um, but I think in almost ninety-nine percent of the time, it's going to be a fee.
But my, my question is, do we, so what that question is, is there shall be a fifty percent reduction in land dedication or fee and lieu for affordable and workforce housing as defined herein. Do we already have an existing IGA with the school district that says one percent? So would we need to update that IGA to reflect that, that we would cut it in half? Like are, I guess what I'm asking is are they, is the school district expecting their one percent no matter what? And do we have the authority to adjust that on our own without them?
The one percent, Nancy, is it, our, our code says a half a percent, doesn't it? Yeah. Oh, the, the draft. Okay.
Good question. Can, can our co-, draft co-, can our code say you're only going to get half your fee school? Or will the school say, no, I don't know. That's, that's not for you?
Yeah, no, I, I, I think it's, it's up to us. We, we don't even have to collect the fee if we don't want to. It's, it's just been, the, the legislature has a statute that allows us to cooperate with schools and collect the fee, but there are some communities that don't collect the fee. And, uh, the, the key is you got to make sure that you provide it to the schools and not just stick it in the general fund or hold on to it indefinitely.
Okay, Patrick, to clarify, you're saying that they don't have, the school district doesn't have a legal right to this one percent cash and fee or lieu? That we're just collecting on their behalf because the state.
Yeah, we, we have, in the past, we have.
Okay.
To, uh, uh, implement a fee and lieu process. And, uh, I think it's fairly common. In fact, I'm not aware of communities that don't have it, but I know there are some. Uh, I'm not aware of a specific community and, and maybe the Logan Simpson people might be aware of any. But, uh, it's, it, it's at the discretion of the city council, whether you collect the fee and then how much you collect the fee. And generally there is some language about, and, and that doesn't necessarily have to be in the code, but I would suggest perhaps we, and I'm not aware that we have anything. Talk to the school district and implement process by which the funds that we collect, they're, they are paid directly to the school district. But in any event, we would need to have some kind of a process to confirm what funds were paid and when they were paid and how much was paid so that we know that the developer is fine with our requirement.
Are we, is he talking about something that's already been set? Like what do we do, Rachel, now?
Well, um, we haven't had to deal with this issue, um, in recent history. But, um, it, it's looking like, I mean, what we're trying to do is clarify and simplify what we've currently got in the code. But we need to do an actual study. And we do need to do an IGA with the school. And I, I don't know if, if the, there's a current one that the city has with the school. Um, but for the purposes of rewriting the land use code and, um, that's what we felt like we could do without doing the thirty thousand dollar market study.
Okay. So I guess the options are like we, I, I like this fifty percent. I think it's an incentive for, you know, density in the workforce housing. But I guess the options are, could we just have it apply to our four percent and not touch the school one percent? Or we could have it be both? Is that what?
Well, I'm, I, I think it makes sense if we're doing it for it to be both, for it to be all of it. But the, the thing that I mostly want to make sure is that the school district, yes, we collect those fees, but does the school district have a recourse where we may rebate the fee? But then the school district goes to someone subdividing in the city and says, we didn't rebate your fee. And then it creates rather than a benefit, but a, a difficulty and a problem for, for someone who's trying to do business here. I just want to make sure that we're, that we have the appropriate agreements in place and, or, or get them in place so that we do this, do it correctly.
I think that's a very sound, um, suggestion to make sure that the, the agreement's in place and that the school district's very well aware that if we're, you know, subdivision's coming in that meets the definition of affordable workforce housing, that they're getting fifty percent of that fee and not, or fifty percent of the one percent. So a half a percent. Yeah.
Can we have a backup plan of it just affecting our four percent if we can't get that in time or, um, I don't know. I guess I just don't want.
What I'm hearing is we can move forward with this language now before that agreement's in place. As long as people are comfortable with that. I don't know if we need to put some clarifying language in there that that fifty percent would be half of, um, ours and the schools and not like just, you know, they still get one and then half of. That makes sense?
Um, yeah, I, I, I guess I'm just thinking of with our current code, one of the issues that we have is, is, um, ambiguity and, and that being a drag on development. And I don't want to be creating similar issues in the new code. So I, I mean, I'm certainly fine with the five percent. I think that makes, I mean, with doing it of the whole five percent. But I just want to make sure that we are doing, we, the city are doing the work on the upfront side to make sure that it's done properly and it doesn't create problem for developers in the future.
That sounds great. We're in general con, um, conformance that the fifty percent. Okay. Awesome. All right. Anything else on chapter four?
Uh, there was another question.
I was going to say the same thing about that.
The emergency access? Yeah, the emergency access question. You had twenty residential units and then Mark to discuss.
Yes. Um, so we, we have discussed this with our advisory committee, our task force. We've discussed it with staff. We've done quite a bit of research. A, a lot of communities will put in an emergency access requirement for a certain number of lots. Um, and I think the Marshall Fire on the Front Range really heightened the awareness of this. Um, because when you have a subdivision where there's a lot of roads snaking around and you only have one point of access, um, you know, you end up with an issue. So, uh, a lot of subdivisions over time have required an, an emergency access or another point out anyway. Um, we came up with twenty based on Cortez subdivision sizes, road lengths, a lot of different variables and, um, seeing that in a fair bit of other codes. Some codes drop that down as low as ten, some are up as high as thirty or forty. Um, one of our biggest, um, examples in the community is up on the hillside off of, can you help me with my geography?
Yeah, I was going to say canyon.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And there's a road that already just goes straight up and dead ends at the, but currently, but you could see how there could be potential development that would go, continue to go up that road, which is probably a very high wildfire risk area anyway. Um, so we were looking at that and, and kind of counting up and twenty still kind of seemed okay there. To some degree, it's, it's, it could be arbitrary. It could be dependent on the situation, the topography. There's a lot of different variables. So, so twenty was kind of our middle of the road where we landed. When it is, if you guys felt comfortable with that or wanted to us to do any additional research or put any additional language or thought into that.
I guess when I read this, I was also thinking besides like, um, emergency response, having like multiple exits.
Mm-hmm. Right.
In the city at large. So, um, I mean, twenty, I don't know. I guess I don't have too much opinion on it, but it, it, it makes sense to me to require two at some point.
Yeah, I think that seems like, I mean, especially since you're arriving at that twenty based on industry standards, that's.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Without being either too low or egregiously high.
Okay. Sounds good. Any other thoughts on that one? We're good, then. Okay. Perfect. All right. Um, let's move into chapter five. Uh, chapter five is of, always a very, the site development standards is always a very, um, I call it a beefy chapter. There's a lot in there. So, um, we're going to start off with parking requirements. So the off-street parking requirements have been updated. We have a table here next to show some of the, the main items that changed. Um, we've provided a graphic to go along with the dimensional standards, uh, to try to help people understand, you know, what, what we mean by an aisle and the depth and the width of a, of a space. It's a fair, fairly standard graphic that's in a lot of different codes. What we've added new to the parking section is an alternative parking plan and then a shared parking option. So this is for a situation, say you have, um, uh, uh, let's see. Maybe there's a business that comes in and, uh, they, they only really, they know that they have patrons coming in on an appointment basis and they're only going to have, you know, two cars at a time, maybe three, and then their employees. But based on their square footage, the table would require, you know, ten spaces. This would give them the option to say with, with very clear justification, I don't need those ten spaces. I'm only putting in four or whatever the number is that, um, that they can justify. There's pretty clear criteria in there of how they would have to justify that. It's not just what I, you know, I think I'm only going to have this many people. It has to be a pretty standard justification for that. Um, additionally with that, we've added a shared parking option section. So say you're, you're primarily day use. You close at five every day. Your next door neighbor is a primarily evening or weekend use and is never going to be open in the day. Um, you can share those parking spaces and you would have to have an agreement, like an access agreement, a legal access agreement, uh, between the two. Uh, but that would allow you to reduce the parking on both, both uses. Um, we added the, the dimensional standards and graphics, and then we've added driveway and access standards. It is based on the current language so that graphic on the bottom, um, the current language speaks to, um, a visual area at corners. So where streets intersect or where a street intersects with an alley or driveway. Um, where two streets intersect, it's twenty-five feet measured from the property line. Some codes measure them from the, um, what they call the flow line or the curb line. And I did a little calculating to see the difference and it's actually exactly the same. They, a lot of codes do thirty-five feet from the flow line, which equates to twenty-five feet from the property line with a five foot sidewalk. So I thought, okay, we're good there. Um, and then in the alley and driveway, it's a fifteen foot, um, kind of triangle. Uh, there is language in your current code about both of those dimensions. Uh, we just tried to clarify it and add some graphics to make it a little easier to understand. Um, there's also language in your current code speaking to what can and can't be within that triangle to, you know, make sure you're able to see around a corner. Um, landscaping needs to be no taller than, I believe, three feet. Fences, um, can be up to four feet in, in that area, but they have to be ninety percent open. So it would have to be like a open rail fence so you can see through it. Or the fence needs to be held behind that triangle. Here is the, um, the residential uses and we actually went with our, uh, task force last night, went through this and have a couple of minor updates, not to any of the, the, um, parking requirement, space requirements, but just a couple of additional uses we wanted to add. But basically, um, your ADUs right now already require one space per dwelling unit. And that's in addition to the primary, the, the primary residence. We've added a cottage cluster use. You guys might remember that from chapter three and have specified one and a half spaces per dwelling unit to be consistent with some of the other uses that are similar to that. We have reduced the single family attached, so that's like your townhomes, to one and a half spaces per dwelling unit from two. The multifamily, which is like apartment complexes, um, reduced to one and a half from two. Studios within a multifamily unit, uh, is a new use and we've allotted one space per dwelling unit. Um, and then this is where we have a change. All other residential structures, we're saying two spaces per dwelling unit, but we don't call out in here specifically a single-family dwelling. So we wanted to highlight that a single-family dwelling unit does require two spaces to make that clear. Um, and then deed restricted for senior housing, we've, we allow a reduction to, um, they can reduce it by one space per unit. So, um, that's kind of what we've done in the residential. A couple of the commercial categories we fine tuned and then the industrial was the other one that we've dropped. Um, your industrial parking standards are, are actually pretty big right now. And so we've reduced that down to only, you know, only the parking needed for employees or if there is a retail, um, space or some sort of public space or office space, um, accommodating just that space at an industrial. If you have a big warehouse and it's per square foot and you only have three people coming to the site, you don't need to have the twenty or thirty spaces that that square footage would require. Any questions on that?
I did have a question on the single, the single-family. Um, and I'm struggling to find it in here, but I thought it said that our rounding rules were that one and a half, basically anything, the rounding rules, one and a half is two.
We need to look at that. That's a good catch. Can you pull up the, it's right before the table. So it's at the beginning of that chapter and we speak, it's in the current, the new one.
Yeah, five oh two, three, A four.
Well, but that doesn't mean, because if you had ten townhomes, you'd be required to have fifteen spaces.
Instead of twenty, yeah.
Oh, I got, okay.
Oh, okay.
I was thinking, I, when I was looking at that, I was, I was thinking detached, not attached. So I was like, how, that, that's still.
You have one unit, yeah, that makes sense. That was a, that was good though. I, for a second I was like, oh no, we need to make sure that that's clear. Um, we still will read through that just to make sure because, um, I don't want that to be a, a point of confusion. This is where my sidewalk language was. Um, sidewalks, fences and walls, um.
I had a, before we move on, I had another question. In the, in section five point oh three, the driveways and access.
Yes.
Um, about prohibited materials and then what triggers an upgrade to the standard? So C says all unpaved parking lots shall be upgraded to these standards upon site plan review. We require a site plan for fences and, and, um, accessory buildings and things like that. I just worry that no one's gonna do anything if they have to spend fifteen thousand dollars on a driveway when really all they want to do is build a, a fence.
That's a really good point. We can look at that language again. Do we, do you have two different types of site plans? Okay, like a minor site plan and a major site?
Was a major site?
That's what I fi, that's what I figured. I just wanted to declare. That you can still build stuff without, without building a hard surface, hard.
Yeah, good, good point.
That is a really good point. And we did talk last night, one of the changes that was proposed by the task force was to look at certain situations where maybe it's based on lot size and use. So maybe you have a large industrial site, um, and honestly, I think the parking would be, well, anyway, a large industrial site, maybe you have five parking spaces or six parkings, maybe, maybe it's a small number of parking spaces. Um, we were talking about not requiring them to pave those because the rest of the site would not be paved anyway, like the industrial yard or, or could be commercial. So we were talking about a threshold, I think at like four spaces or less of parking spaces would not be required to be paved. The developer could still pave them if they were in an urban environment, but if it's, you know, a certain lot size in a certain zone district. So we're still kind of mulling around that option and we were gonna do, do a little number crunching and see what might work. But would that be something that would, kind of to your point, you know, not every parking lot needs to be fully paved?
Yeah, I think, I mean, that, doing things to a threshold makes sense to me. I, I think especially there, like I'm thinking, I'm trying to think of if, so if a single-family, a single-family residence wanted to build an ADU, because that's a residence, that is a, that's not just a, a more minor site plan. That's like real development, development. So if there was a threshold, then they wouldn't have to be doing parking development. Four would be, eh, they would be below that because you would have two for the, two for the main residence and then one for the ADU, I think is correct. So that would avoid, that would avoid that. I think that's reasonable. Setting it, the, the threshold is as you're doing larger, larger amounts of development, the threshold kicks in.
So like if I was to build an ADU, would I have to pave my driveway?
Uh, that is a really good question and I don't believe so. I think that was intended for parking lots, like commercial parking lots. But you bring up, I mean, this is always great to see how the language is seen through other eyes. So, um, I think the intention was not that you would have to pave your, um, driveway.
Okay.
But if you had a common, you know, if you had like a guest, if it was a townhome, you know, area and each person had their own parking, but then there was a common area for, um, you know, guest parking and it was above this threshold that we're gonna set, say, four, um, then you would have to pave that, so. Kind of thinking through some nar, some scenarios on the fly here and I think, I think that still kind of works. Okay. Great, great questions. All right, sidewalks and fences.
I do have one, sorry, I have one other question. The restricted use of required parking areas. So I know for a lot of resident, and this is more for residences and it may, the threshold piece may come into play there. But, um, I don't know how we would even police if someone has a boat or a trailer or whatever in their garage space that is one of their required two spaces. So that is what I would have a concern about is our ability to, to even, even contemplate that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think maybe some clarification in that, that particular section, that that does apply more to commercial, industrial, multifamily. Right.
No, and I know, but I, I guess I. And that ma, that, a hundred percent. Yeah, that makes sense. I just want to make sure that we're not, I, I guess I want to make sure that we aren't changing, well, I guess not in this instance, not changing our current code to just basically be saying, well, we don't really enforce this. I think rather than saying that, we should fix it, clean it up, clean it up to make it make sense. And because I know like some people might look at that and be like, what do you mean? I can't have a trailer in my, in my own garage.
Right.
And we're saying, well, it doesn't really count. It's for commercial, but the code doesn't really say that.
Right, good catch. We can clarify that. What about pulling up the garage and putting the bark, boat in the driveway? We live in Colorado where everyone has their toys in the garage and their car's out. All right, sidewalk, fences and walls, you ready? Okay, um, I kind of stated this earlier, but we did not change the sidewalk width in the central business district was, which is downtown, um, or in the commercial district. But we did increase it from four feet to five feet in all other districts per what we, um, just talked about. The fence height was another thing. In your current code, you have, um, an eight-foot height for residential and a seven-foot height for commercial. And in most communities, it's actually reversed. Uh, so we looked into, um, permits and different things and said, let's just make it all eight. Most of the others were eight. I think commercial was the only one that was seven. So, um, increasing that to eight for consistency. And then this last bullet, um, Michaela and I were just looking at this today and I think, um, we rewrote it to be a little bit more clear. I think a graphic would help in the, in the code. Um, and it really is to speak to, um, the front, so in front of your building, so if you, if, most people have a fence that goes from kind of the front of the house back. But if you were to fence that front yard, it would need to be four feet height or less. Um, so just trying to make that clear in the current code. It talks about the front yard fence being four feet, but we wanted to make sure it was very clear what is the front yard fence. So I think a graphic will help that as well. Um, any questions on sidewalks, fences and walls?
Uh, I had a question on fences. Um, the, mostly on the construction method section, it seemed pretty prescriptive, um, as opposed to being tied to like wind load or something. I mean, we're, we're telling people the post spaces, that must be ten feet, at least eighteen inches deep. That feels more building code than planning, than, or than land use to me. Um, and if we're locking this into our land use code and five years from now, fence construction methods change and you're using like helical screw things more and they can be twenty-five feet apart, we're still locked into this.
That's a good thought. What are some other thoughts on that? Because that is in the current code. Um, we debated whether we should pull that back or leave it in. Uh, left it in, but I agree with you. It's, it's an oddly prescriptive section compared to the rest of the code.
Is that something that could just be in the permit or the application?
It could be, yeah. Do we have?
Um, yeah, you know, I, I think some of that is building code that has also been codified in the. I mean, I guess it's helpful in a way that we can show, oh, look, you want a fence. This is what we need to do in the code. See, it's in the code. But it's also, you know, for safety, so your fence doesn't fall over and some things like that. So, um, yeah, I suppose we could just, um.
Does it have more weight here than in like just the permit?
Yes.
It's the same weight.
Same, well, well, except, I guess, yeah. Oh, building permit, yeah, you're right. I mean, we could pull it back and say for health, safety, you know, make sure you're building a, a fence per best practices and then have that detail in the permit.
I mean, uh, part of what I was looking at, because it says when available fences should be built according to manufacturer recommendation. You could almost defer to that and then have the, if there, if you're not building with the manufacturer, if you're, you're building yourself or whatever, then I, I guess I do, I do just think it is a little prescriptive for our.
Okay. We can, we can reduce that and just take it out to the permit.
And I know the whole point of having like a very clear code is to avoid variances, but I'm just thinking about fence variances that I've come across just from our previous code and, and the, in the community. Um, and I guess like what would that look like? You know, like we, we, there's. Base, who live on, uh, highway one forty-five and so they've gotten, uh, a variance or, you know, a permit to build a six-foot fence instead of four because the way that that landscape is, is like their house is well above the road. Um, and also it's a highway, so it's noisier to block a little more out, but you can still see their house.
Yeah.
Um, and then I remember a variance for someone who wanted a taller fence because of their dog. And so we made it, had, had to be like a clear fence, you know, or a, like a chain link fence or, you know, so that you could still see through it.
Sure. Um, for the first scenario, we could write into the code that if there's a grade change that already negates that need for, uh, vision clearance, that it, it would not have to meet that standard, so you wouldn't have to get a variance for that. Otherwise, I think we leave it as is and, and people, if you've only seen a few variances, then maybe it's, it's okay. I always think, my, my thing is if you're seeing a repetitive pattern in variances, then there's probably something broken that we need to fix. But if it's, if it's a really isolated situation, yeah.
Okay, then I guess we, we see what comes.
Okay, okay.
Because we can always update this again.
Absolutely, yeah. But that grade change does seem kind of like, you know, if the road is here and the, the natural grade of the site is already above and you, you already can't, you know, it's already negating that vision clearance then, but.
I was whispering, but I tell people you can't apply for variance for that. It won't be granted. Um, it, like the dog. Um, for, uh, the hillside, that's a perfect criteria for it. So that works. I had one lady who just was like, hey, I'm on corner and people cut through my yard and four feet's not to, high enough. And I was like, you could apply, but I don't think I could support that because it's not the typical criteria for it. So you'd have to put different criteria in.
Right.
Right. Well, and then the land, the, the gradient is more permanent situation than a dog, yeah. Are we updating our variance requirements as well at some point?
We'll be looking at them. Yeah, that's the next section we're diving into, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that's part of this.
Yeah, our, our attorney loves to just take a look at that and make sure that it's, uh, the criteria specifically is, is straightforward, so.
Okay.
All right, we can always come back to any of those if, if any other thoughts, uh, come to mind. Landscaping. We have quite a few slides on landscaping here. I know it's been a, a topic of discussion in the past. Uh, what we did is we added some general landscape standards. We took your existing language, kept some pieces of it that speak to, uh, just kind of generally what we, you know, what the city needs to see for landscaping as far as them, you know, the plant material being of a certain quality and things like that. Um, there's also a section in your current code about what needs to go into, uh, a landscape plan submittal. And we've pulled that kind of into its own section. Um, we did add very specific standards for commercial, industrial and parking lots and then very specific buffering standards. Currently, the CBD area is exempt from landscaping because it's primarily paved and we kept that in place. So getting into kind of some of the specifics, uh, we have, I want to see if we have the parking lot in here. We do, okay. So the, um, commercial landscape standards, your current standard just says ten percent of the site needs to be landscaped. Um, doesn't say where or, or particularly what type of material. Um, so what we've proposed here is, uh, there's some parking lot landscape standards. So if you have a commercial parking lot, you would need to meet those parking lot standards for that portion of the site. Um, and then the very front of the building would be required to have, um, one tree per forty linear feet and one shrub per ten linear feet. Uh, most people plant shrubs that are, you know, anywhere from two to five feet wide. So if you think about one per ten linear feet, you're gonna have some space in there where, you know, it's not fully, um, landscaped really heavily. You can have some rock space in between. And then around the perimeter, it would be dependent on, um, the buffering standards. So, um, if you had a type A buffer, that would be one type of landscaping around the perimeter B and C. Um, so, so that's how we've kind of tailored the commercial landscape standards. Any specific questions or thoughts on this? Yes?
I'm just wondering why the emphasis on planting things that need water. Um, I know that there's a few times where it's references zero scaping as kind of like an aspirational thing. But this feels like a really important moment where we could codify zero scaping and like, you know, really limit water usage.
Yeah.
Um, so yeah, I just was kind of curious, like, why didn't we go all in on that? And is there still time to? And that kind of applies throughout this section, like I have more comments, but.
Yeah, so, um, there is still time. This is, this is the proposal that's, you know, that we've all put together with, uh, quite a bit of discussion. So there's, there's a number of reasons. So zero scaping is xeric plant material. So it's using native plants or adapted plants that take very little water. Zero scaping with a Z, zero, is like rock. So there's, there's a lot of benefit. There's a lot of studies that have been done that speak to the benefits of plant material, both trees for shade and also even small, uh, ground covers or, or grasses or shrubs. Again, for providing shade for the soil, um, for the overall health of an environment and for habitat. So, so what we tried to do is come up with a balance. Um, I think throughout this section, you'll see fifty percent coverage of live material. So, um, once you do all the calculations and get all of this in, um, you can have fifty percent of that just be rock or mulch, uh, material. Um, and again, that's to speak to the health of the environment and creating some, some gra, some cover and some shade. So that's kind of the, the thirty thousand foot reason for some green material. So, yeah. And then zero scape is using adaptive. And then zero scape is using adapted and native species. So if you use species that are really truly native to the area, ideally you spend maybe water the first couple of years, maybe first two or three years, even with trees. And then, uh, from then on, just whatever water we're getting should, uh, support the species. So you're not having to use a ton of supplemental water.
Do, do we have like a recommended list of, uh, plants? Okay. Can that just be referred to of like, you know? Because like there are trees and shrubs that are probably within that list that we would prefer them, you know, it'd save them water and they'd be native. Do we have, what if someone plants like a Russian olive?
So there actually is a section in here about prohibited species and one of them is Russian olive.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, and you have a current plant list right now, um, that the city has, uh, we, we were able to dig that up. Um, I, we'll, we'll take a look at it and see if there's anything missing. Um, it already is, it's pretty comprehensive. I was, I was pretty impressed with how it's laid out. So. And it is referenced in here, I think at the beginning of the chapter about using, you know, suggested plant lists. So it's just to help people. It's not saying you have to use that plant list, but it gives guidance to folks on what's, um, native or adapted in this area. So. All right. The commercials probably, I will admit, probably the heaviest landscaped of all of, um, all of the different scenarios we've come up with. Industrial, we've really pulled the landscaping back to just any public entry and parking lot areas. Um, so if you were industrial, if industrial is all the way around you, you would not be required to do any other landscaping on the backside of the lot. If you're adjacent to commercial residential open space type uses, then there would be buffering required. Uh, parking lot landscaping, tried to keep this, uh, fairly straightforward with, you know, if you have a parking lot island, you would need to put a tree and a couple of shrubs in there. And then around the perimeter, there's a little bit of landscaping, um, and some of that is dependent on the, the buffering around the perimeter as well. Um, pretty standard. Some landscape codes get really, um, detailed and ask for a lot of plant material in a parking lot. And we'll even ask for two trees on those islands. We were trying to temper this and kind of come in with something that seemed, um, not, not too far, not too little. So we're trying to find something kind of in the middle.
Um, I have a question for Nancy. Uh, if you know the background on 11th street station in Durango, it's kind of a music venue, food truck place, and they like, they'll have a stage put up for music and they can move it down. So their landscaping is portable so that they can like move it around. So they meet landscaping standards, but they can keep rearranging their lot to accommodate the stage or whatever food trucks are coming in. Do you know the history of that and how they were able to like do that?
Well, my guess is they're in the central business district and it doesn't really have.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, it's, it's on main street. So. Oh, okay. That's a good point.
It's a cool idea though, having that.
We, we did talk, um, about the idea last night of clustering some of this so that it, you did the same amount of trees, but not spaced in one, you know, parking lot. Cause they don't survive as well as they would if you did two large islands or, or maybe there's a reason not to have those trees spaced out along the budget.
Yeah, I, I really support the idea of the landscaped islands. I just think it's really important. I mean, heat islands, I think are a real thing. And I think that, you know, cities even our size suffer from that effect. And so I think it's appropriate and I'd like to see that for sure. Stay in there for sure.
Yeah. Have you ever been to like the Walmart parking lot in the summer and everyone's clustered under the one tree? So, right. Right. Yep. Okay. Um, the buffering, what we did was we have a type A, type B and type C. They're type, they're tied to the use, not the zone district. So if you have an industrial use in a commercial zone district next to a commercial use, then you would need to buffer between the two. Um, and so we've developed this table to try to explain, on the left would be the existing use and up across the top is you're coming in with a new use. And what you, what the new use needs to do for buffering. So single family detached would not need to buffer against anything. They're the least intense use. So it's basically the, the more intense use coming, the new development coming in next to a less intense use requires some level of buffering. And then the buffer standards, um, Michaela and I played around with these quite a bit. Actually, we wrote some language, developed the graphic, said, whoa, that's a lot. Let's pull it back on a couple of these. Um, and so we've come up with a buffer type A, which is, um, two trees per, one tree per 60 feet, I believe. Um, I guess that's why I printed these out in front of me so I can see them. Um, and then shrubs at, at the base. Um, and then your type B buffer gets a little bit more intense. So you'd have three trees per 100 feet, which is basically about one per 35 feet, which is your standard shade tree is kind of spaced about that anyway. Um, 10 large shrubs per hundred feet. So again, if you cluster those shrubs or use different sizes, species, you know, you're, you're still going to have, it's not going to be fully landscaped across there. Um, and then our type C buffer is the most intense. This is intended more for, um, buffering, kind of outdoor storage or those really intense, um, industrial uses against a lesser intense use. Um, and so in this case, uh, we do require a, a fence or wall. And actually I just realized we had seven feet for a long time, but we just recently changed all the fence and walls to eight feet. So I think we need to update that to say eight feet as well. Um, and then any shrubs would be on the outside of the wall. So not on the, um, development side, but the, the side that you're trying to buffer. Um, and then a few trees. And a lot of people always ask, what's the point of the trees and the shrubs when you're bringing in a wall? Cause we're already walling it off. The trees help, you know, a lot of times you're buffering for large equipment that's going to stick up above that eight foot fence. So the trees just kind of help mitigate that a little bit more. And then the shrubs are, um, honestly primarily to kind of help mitigate the, the large fence or wall. So those could stay or go, but, um, it's, it's our suggestion at the moment. So.
And they, they also provide, I think, sound buffering.
Yes, that's true. Sound buffering.
Breaking up some of that reflective, reflective sound.
Right. And it's pretty minimal. I mean, this graphic, we, we have kind of large shrubs in there. So it makes it look like a whole, whole row of shrubs. But if you really think about that, it, it could be kind of clustered. In fact, maybe we need to change the graphics to show a little more clustering. If that, you know, since that's kind of the.
I have a couple of questions for you guys.
Yeah.
Um, so we talked about reducing the, um, overall coverage to, of the landscape area. So do the new graphics, um, reflect that? Um, or is it different because it's a buffering and that's a different than?
Yeah. I think it still is applicable. And that's where I was talking about. Maybe we need to cluster or kind of show some space between some of the shrubs. Cause it does look like it's almost a hundred percent of that, that strip, but I think in reality it wouldn't, it wouldn't be. Or it depends on the plant species, honestly. If you put in a really fat species, then it would cover. And if you put in a skinny grass, then it wouldn't. So.
Okay. And are we talking about, let's see, maybe we're not at that section yet. What the height will be at maturity or when it's?
Great question. It's a height at maturity.
Okay. Okay. So it could be much smaller when you plant it.
Yes, exactly.
It would be covering a certain percentage.
Correct. Yep.
Um, and then the other question is, uh, like we had talked about outdoor display and different scenarios, like somebody, a hot tub salesman or something like. So in a case like this, um, oh, that wouldn't necessarily be industrial. So I'm just wondering, okay, if I were selling hot tubs, I wouldn't want it screened off.
Right.
Yeah.
So this would be for the storage area where you're storing your equipment, but the display area would not. Okay. This requirement. Okay. Good question though. Right. That's what I was saying. I think this graphic is, um, prior to that change to eight foot. So I think we need to change this to eight foot to be consistent. Yeah. No, no worries. Good call. You're, you're looking at them. That's good.
I can have an oddly specific question. Pre-list, there are four trees and one of them listed is the ash tree. Do we know why? Is that a throwback from before? Like, there's several different types of ash trees. So I'm not really
Yeah.
understanding why that would be one that's on the list.
Yeah. Um, that one is added, it's a fairly recent addition to a lot of li, uh, trees in the state or lists in the state. Um, there's an emerald ash borer that is killing all of the, um, I can't remember which species it is, American ash, green ash, I think. Um, and so they, a lot of cities are now prohibiting them because why plant new ones until this ash borer is, is out of the way. So. Um, we, we could leave that on the list as an option. Most nurseries are not selling it anymore either. Um, it, it came to Colorado five or six years ago, um, landed in Boulder first, of course. Came through on some firewood. Um, but it was on the east coast. It has, it has decimated the, the green ash on the east coast and it finally crossed the Mississippi on some wood and, uh, is now destroying trees up and down the, the front range. Yep. So, in fact, a lot of the cities on the front range are working, had started working on mitigation plans before. They knew it was coming. And they worked on mitigation plans to start to pair up new street trees, especially specifically in, in the city right away. So that when the trees go out, they have new trees to take the place. So. It's crazy what a little beetle can do. All right. Um, we developed some new, this, this section is completely new, natural resource protections. Um, and across the state and in other states, um, a lot of people have much larger buffers. Uh, we, we discussed this quite a bit and figured there's not, there's hard, I don't think there's any lakes currently. Um, or very few lakes or reservoirs that would be, um, seeing development near them. Um, wetlands, there are a couple, uh, rivers, maybe, maybe not so much. And then streams, a couple. So we've come, we've proposed a fairly, um, uh, it's the opposite of conservative, very permissive, I guess, um, buffers, but trying to introduce them into the city nonetheless. So, um, 50 feet to, and 30 feet are the, the required buffers. Uh, yes.
Um, I might've missed it, but I don't think that there's any reference to whether it's up or down gradient from the resource, like.
Okay.
So I think, you know, for any potential like water of the US or water of the state feature like a wetland. Um, that should be taken into account, right? And so if you're up gradient of the feature, then 30 feet is probably fine. But if the feature, or wait, I think I said that backwards, but I think you know where I'm trying to go with it.
Yeah.
Um, but I think that matters a lot, especially in an area where we get like kind of fast precipitation where we kind of know that stuff is going to run downhill.
Sure. Okay. Yeah. And, and that's interesting. An interesting perspective. Um, this is intended to protect the feature more than the structure, but, um, but yeah. Okay. Perfect. Perfect. So then that does work. Um, so yeah. Do you have a suggestion? Any, any thoughts on, would you like to see something different or some clarifying language?
Oh gosh. Um, I think clarifying language and, um, I think maybe adding like, like doubling the buffer that you have right now. If the house, building, whatever is up gradient from the water feature.
Okay. Where their impacts would be.
Yeah.
I mean, down into, okay.
Yeah. So just to be more protective of the water feature where the topography is like working against us essentially.
Okay. Other thoughts on that one?
What, I mean, I thi, I think it makes sense to take the, um, topography of where you are into account, but I was just curious what, um, you said other cities have much bigger buffer.
Yep. Um, a hundred feet is really, uh, really common. A hundred and fifty feet we've seen in few communities. Fort Collins has set a very high bar. They have, um, 300 feet from certain, um, high, like high habitat areas. Um, but most of their buffers are about a hundred to a hundred and fifty feet. Um, Fort Collins is, again, they've set the bar very high. They have a whole environmental analysis on a site. So, um, in the spring, if you have nesting songbirds, you can't do your construction. So I don't think you guys want to go quite that far, but so that, that's one very far end of the spectrum. But, um, but they ha, they have quite a few environmental protections and they started with something like this and have just built over time.
I guess I just thought of this, but so would this apply? On the city lots, you're not going to be able to build on your lot. Uh, most of them are small, but it makes sense when you're laying out a subdivision to hold back.
That's a really good point, Nancy. I think we were intending for, um, more thinking in the subdivision terms, but you're right. If you're coming in with a single family home, do we need to specify that that's either exempt or a smaller buffer?
I'm, I'm not even sure we know.
Mm-hmm.
That, that was actually one of the questions is do we even have all that mapped? I, I mean, we have flood zones mapped, which is sort of a similar.
City doesn't have it mapped, but there are federal resources like the national wetland inventory, uh, which does show what is in Colorado and in Cortez. I've used it before to review planning applications. Um, I was going to say something in response, Nancy. Oh, and I was just going to say too, I think if, if it did come up with like a single family home, I think that's, uh, an example of a variance probably. And I think that if you were the applicant, you would just need to show that maybe you have a berm, you know, separating your planned house from the water feature. You know, there, I think there are very easy ways to apply for a variance to mitigate that in the off chance that it is a single family.
Okay. Yeah. Any other thoughts on that?
Um, if we don't have a city, if we don't have a city, uh, like wetland map, do we need to define where we're drawing? What's a wetland from?
We were just talking about that last night. So the, um, I think it starts to get there, but the, the national wetland inventory is what you go to first to see, you know, is there a wetland near my site, on my site potentially? And then, um, I believe we have language in there that speaks to, um, you have to have, get that verified. So you'd have to have a, a, um, a qualified professional, um, say yes, that the soil and the plant material are truly a wetland. And then they would define where the edge of the wetland is, and that's where you buffer from, for a wetland. For water, um, you know, rivers, streams and lakes, it's from the high water mark. The established high water mark, which does fluctuate, but there's, there's always an established high water mark on, on those, um, water features. Correct. Yeah.
I'm wondering how you define that for the, particularly for the intermittent and seasonal.
Right.
I think it's covered in five point zero eight point three.
Yeah. I'd say, I just hadn't seen it before. Um, okay.
Cool. All right. Um, my mouse, oh, I'm supposed to be clicking. I was rolling. Um, lighting. I know we talked about this last time we met that we were, we all had agreed upon kind of something in the middle of the road, not going too far, you know, fully dark sky compliant, but you have nothing now. So bringing us into something. Um, so based on those metrics that we talked about last time, um, we've added a purpose applicability exemption and prohibit, prohibition section. Um, we have, uh, language talking about no light trespassing beyond the property line. Uh, downward directed and fully shielded, a color of 300 Kelvin. And if you guys remember from last time, that kind of gets you more in the amber range that allows wildlife to, to move and not be prohibited or inhibited. Um, and then light level of no more than 10,000 lumens per light. And I keep thinking that's still pretty permissive. And I talked to somebody today that knows a lot about lighting and she said, yeah, that's actually still a pretty decent level of light. So we're not, we're not talking about, you know, really cranking down the light. The other thing that, um, Michaela and I were talking about today, kind of thinking about this is, um, we don't have any restrictions on, you know, how, how far apart or close together light fixtures can be. So this is really just getting that downward directed, kind of the color and the light level of each fixture. Um, but it doesn't prohibit somebody, um, you know, in a commercial development, if they really want to have additional lighting, having, you know, the lights closer together to create more light or, um, the opposite. Maybe they want it a little further apart to have a little bit more dark sky. So I think it, it does provide still some flexibility in there. So I think it, it does provide still some flexibility in there for the individual property owner. Um, and then I think we have a graphic on what that downward directed, fully shielded and not trespassing beyond the property line kind of looks like. So are there any questions on that? I know we talked about it a lot last time. I'm hoping the language reflected what we had discussed. Okay. Um, the sign code, we have done, we haven't done a lot to the dimensions. Um, the existing sign code language, we did put the, um, the, uh, number of signs, square footage of signs in a table to try to make it a little easier to read. We added electronic message center standards, provided some graphics to help understand how you measure the sign, um, what the different sign types are, just to kind of help, help read the, um, code a little bit better. Um, that's mostly what we did. Oh, we did, there was one other change in here, um, and we have a, a big question for you guys in this section. Um, but one of the changes is billboards are listed at a hundred and twenty-eight square feet for the maximum size. The maximum size that was allowed for any one sign in a commercial or industrial area was, uh, two hundred square feet. And we said, why can we have a larger sign in a commercial area than a billboard? So we've reduced that to the same size as a billboard, uh, for consistency. There's, um, as Nancy has said several times, your sign code still allows for a lot of signage, um, and, um, but, you know.
Did you bring up the billboard? So it allows for billboards, but there was a moratorium.
Correct.
That's still in place, um, against new billboards. So that's a big question there, is do you wanna keep them in your code or should we?
Where's that sunset clause? Is that in, which chapter is that in?
The sunset clause was in the non-conforming.
Oh.
Which, do, do you guys remember when we discussed that, it like, the billboards were supposed to sunset in like nineteen ninety-nine or a very long time ago? Um, and so we had updated that language to just say, no, um, the non-conforming signs are not allowed to, you know, build, build new. But because of that and then paired with this, do we want to even allow any new billboards? I think your code basically right now does not allow new billboards, but then there's a whole section on how to build a billboard, so. We could just simply state in the billboard section, billboards are prohibited in Cortez and that, that would solve it if we wanted to prohibit them. Okay, new billboards prohibited.
Yeah, very.
How do you feel about billboards? All right, yeah.
It, and they're not supposed to be rebuilt, but they are being rebuilt and there's nothing happening. I'm watching it happen. They're rebuilding these billboards. So if we say no more billboards, then no more billboards.
Right. Yeah, I'd agree with you.
Well, I, I had a similar question about the electronic messaging signs.
Yeah.
Are they, I mean, do we need to allow them? We have the ones we have. And, I, I mean, this, I do think this resolves a lot of the issues we have, because we do have ones, if you drive down, if you drive down Main Street, there's ones that look like police lights already. So I, I think that does help address that, the motion and, and some of that, but, um, yeah, I, I guess I just was wondering if, if there, if that's community benefit or, or not.
Yeah, I was worried about the electronic messaging signs too, like, if we're going to allow them, I'd like to be stricter in like where they can go and maybe time limits on when they're on, um, but.
Looking through the code that they've, they presented, it's pretty restrictive, I thought. I looked at, we looked at it last night quite a bit and it's, it's pretty restrictive.
Yeah, I didn't think.
If you have any flashing, it's gotta be sixty seconds apart or something, and so I don't have a problem with the way it's written here now, uh, on the new proposal, because it's pretty restrictive.
Uh, but I think we should decide what zoning can have electric lights, because there's, um, I guess it's technically neighborhood business zoning, but there's a realtor, um, extrove that has a flashing light and it's a neighborhood, but then the grocery store's right there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and it, but it's a historic, yeah, neighborhood, um, and a lot of the residents, well, some of the residents around there have complained about it being on all night. So like, can we restrict electronic signs to just like commercial and the commercial business district or?
Well, it does, I mean, this does limit it to within, uh, distance of not less than, uh, a hundred feet of single family residences, so.
Okay.
It does, it does provide some, some mediation there.
And from properties zoned for single family residential purposes. So how, what, how does, uh?
So that's something that we could add in there if we wanted to.
Okay.
Um, this is if it's zoned for residential use, so neighborhood business, you can do commercial and residential. So maybe some clarify, clarification around that, maybe it's, um, a hundred feet from a property that is used as a residential use or something, I don't know. In the, true.
That's, yeah, and there, and it's, and it's peppered in, so like you'd be saying like, this block can't have, this block can. I think that would create some issues.
I like restricting it to C and CBD. I think that's really straightforward. And then keeping that hundred foot, so then they're not allowed in neighborhood business.
Yeah.
That one that is in neighborhood business would be non-conforming and as that site.
Okay. Yeah, and then, um, council member or Mayor Protemdehaven mentioned, um, like a schedule too. Is there any way to restrict like, these signs can't be on from ten to six or midnight to six or? I don't know.
Yeah, we, we could. We certainly could, um.
Guess what have other communities done?
Um, some other communities have actually required that the light level gets turned down at night so that it's not so bright. Um, again, that would be, um, something that, you know, someone complains and, and code enforcement goes out with a light meter and says, oh, right, you're, you're, you're well over that, um, light level. Another thing I've seen in some communities who wanted to start to roll out the allowance of EMCs without having too many of them is, um, having like a, a very large distance between EMCs. So if you, if, but that, that gets into some interesting property rights, you know? This guy can have it, but this guy can't, because he's five hundred feet, you know, within that five hundred feet. Um, yeah, restricting the size, the flashing, Nancy brought up a good point last night. There was one somewhere that has like a little animation, but it's not flashy or anything, it's just kind of a, a simple animation. Yeah, so we. Which is the point, we're not, we're trying to not distract people, but she, you know, anyway. Um, so that's why we have a static message as a requirement. So you can change the message, it can transition, but it's not supposed to have any like, you know, this kind of change, it's just supposed to change, so.
I like the, um, light change restriction you mentioned for, for evenings.
Okay.
Yeah.
There was one I, I passed recently, it was not in your community, and it was so bright against, you know, while you're driving that it almo- it almost made it just hard to, to, to drive, you know, kind of just, it really distracted. And a lot of people use on I twenty-five up north near Johnstown, there's a, an RV sales. And that one is huge and really bright and, and it's been brought up in many, many cases over the years, that it's just too much. So. We use that as a, an, an example of what we don't want to do in a lot of communities, unfortunately. Yeah, you drive down the highway and everyone's like, ah! Okay, any other questions on signs? I think you guys have answered our billboard question pretty loud and clear, so that's, that's helpful. Thank you.
Okay, and, well, just to clarify too, a billboard is an off premises sign. So if you have a sign and it's on your premises and, you know, freestanding or whatever, that's not considered a billboard.
Um, we did actually have, I just remembered another, um, piece that came out of our task force last night is maybe adding a little bit of language in here on what is a, um, appropriate sign material? Like, high qual- you know, quality materials and, and kind of defining what a temporary sign is so that you don't get just a piece of plywood with paint on it and calling that a permanent sign.
Yeah, I like that. And this comment question might be outside the scope of this section, but I, I was thinking too of a couple residents that have kind of painted signs on their own homes. Is that something we can like address with, with this or is?
Is it for a business or is it just?
Just messages?
Yes.
Just opinions?
Where's Pat?
Loud, fancy.
Yeah, that veers toward, it's political speech.
Yeah.
Right.
But when you have that stuff like all for years?
Yeah, I think, I've dealt with this in another small community, um, up north. And what, what they did is they used the size, so you can have a temporary sign, like the political signs, without a permit. Anything above a certain size requires a permit. So if somebody has a message on their home, to Pat's point, we can't regulate the content of that. But if it's larger than a temporary sign, the city can say, hey, you need to get a permit for that, because now it is a sign. And the size, I think, is two by th- the, the temporary signs is only six, two by three, so it's pretty small. So this, the message wouldn't be as in your face if it was small as if it was a larger.
Yeah, I think we need to go back and address the, the spray paint on particle board propped up against the car in the driveway of the commercial business. Uh, it's tacky and I, I don't like it.
Yeah.
So what can we do to address that?
I think that's a really great point, Dennis. I was thinking exactly the same thing. And maybe, I mean, Pat, you can tell me I'm wrong on this, but, I mean, there's at least one place in town where, you know, they have profanity painted on the side of their house, directed at their neighbor, and it is huge. And, and it's not okay. It's actually where just two years ago, there was an elementary school. So elementary school kids every day get to go and see the F-word. Is there any provision at all for profanity like that being painted on somebody's house for everybody to see? I, I mean, and I'm, I'm. What's that? Maybe I'm a prude.
You can regulate non- and intended to incite violence. Profanity is to, to help. But certainly the size and even if it's painted on the out, it's still, it's a letter, it's the size. We can regulate that, uh, there's a example, I'm sure we're all aware of, Madison Street, this out of Madison that. Apparently the two neighbors don't get along and one of them is children, but.
The size.
So is that something?
She's like.
To modify more in, in this or?
I'm kind of hearing that they've, they're already out of compliance and we're not doing anything, so.
Yeah, I mean.
Cause I just want to. Yeah, I mean, if there's a way to make their life easier with better code too, that, I just wanna say that while we're here.
A, a complete overhaul of the sign code may be one of those third rail issues that we kind of decided at the outset of this process that we don't want to take the whole concrete ride, because we picked a couple controversial topics that cause people screaming and yelling. And that may be one that we want to look at on its own after this thing is adopted and see if there are other changes that we want to make. But it'll take a, a, a view that there's been a lot of litigation that the court of, uh, sign codes.
To, to go back to council, Councilor Spruul's point about the, I don't even know if I'd quite call them temporary signs, but is there, do places draw a threshold where you can't have, a sign must be made out of permanent materials, so not a banner and not a plot, I don't know, like fiberboard painted thing?
Yes.
Um, after, I don't know, sixty days or whatever the timeline would be.
Yeah, um, it, it is addressed to some degree, uh, but last night when we were talking, we thought maybe that needed to be strengthened. So, it, the way that they, a lot of communities do this is they write it the inverse. So a temporary sign is a banner, you know, canvas material, blah, blah, blah. Um, and then by nature of the inverse of that, then a permanent sign would have to be a quality materi- a permanent material. Be- because some people could say, you know, a, a vinyl banner is, you know, fairly long term. But if we state specifically that that's a temporary sign, then it could never be used as a material as a permanent sign.
And, and we do have businesses in town that do have vinyl, vinyl banners and they, they're, they use them as their permanent signs. And, you know, it would increase their expense by requiring, um, sturdier kind of material.
Got the, the one?
Mm-hmm, feather flags or the?
What do you call them? Yeah.
Car washes seem to like them, I guess.
And some communities are flat out prohibiting, um, feather flags and some of the, um, more animated signs. Some communities are saying that's a temporary sign, you have to get a permit and you can only have it up for a certain number of days or during a sales event or things like that. So yours is actually fairly permissive in that realm right now. All right. Any other questions on signs? Okay. Any other questions in chapter five? Anything we didn't cover in the presentation that you may have seen in reviewing and you want to ask?
Um, sorry, I had a question, I can't remember, this is four or five, that is about road dedication, so private, um, like a private subdivision wanting to dedicate their roads to the city and it was about fifty-one percent. Um, I'm just trying to remember that, because we actually have an ongoing, I, I think it's put to bed for now, but that's gonna, um, kind of bring that argument back. We have a subdivision that wants the city to take over their roads. And if, remember, remind me if I'm correct, you guys told them they needed a hundred percent.
No, that was Mike Green.
Oh, okay, that was previous.
We, we came up in, in reviewing the, the law on that, um, it's, uh, it's not a hundred percent, but it's still discretionary on the city's part. So the, the development can vote to, uh, so when they plat it, they, they plat the, uh, roads as dedicated to the public, the city doesn't have to accept them, uh, even approving the plat. And, and that, that's what, what happened there was they, they actually didn't even dedicate them to the public. And then later on, they wanted, some of them wanted to and some of them didn't. And, uh, but we, we looked at that a little more closely and determined it, it doesn't require a hundred percent of the property owners to do that. But it still remains the city's discretionary decision as to whether or not the city accepts any dedication.
Okay, I just want to make sure that this code expresses that, because, um, it's on page ten of chapter four where it says, you know, cause is that saying that like if they meet these requirements and fifty, a minimum of fifty-one percent of property owners? um, petition for it and it meet and it's um, meets the uh, what is this inspection? Does that mean we have to take it or that we would consider? Or like it would have for us to even consider taking it, it has to meet these requirements, but we don't necessarily have to say yes still.
Yeah, I'm reading the language again.
Otherwise, Southern Bluffs is gonna be coming to our meetings.
Look that one over again.
Yeah, we we do need to read that again because it it doesn't say, it it talks about the threshold, all everything you just said, but it doesn't say whether the city has to accept it at require of all those requirements. Um, I believe fifty-one percent is in your current code too, because I don't think we brought that in as um, standard. In some communities I've seen, um, it's supposed to be a majority or even sometimes a super majority of a a neighborhood. I've seen even two thirds of the neighborhood have to, but in in to your point, um, in that particular situation, I think you're you're gonna get close to a hundred percent that want it dedicated and so we need to figure out how that works.
Where it's a problem is doing the initial plating, there's only one, one lot owner, developer owns all the lots, so the percentage is not an issue. It's and I think in the land development code, we want to be sure that the be eligible for city acceptance. They have to meet our roads, our current roads. But I think where we run into problems is down the road. Even if they were constructed with the current standard at the time the development was platted, but the city didn't accept them, then what do you do? And we may want to look.
Yeah, I I think I would still like to clarify the city's discretion whether to accept or not. This this I don't think is clear enough. This is basically saying if the roads are in okay shape according to the city engineer and public works director, then maybe it maybe it just happens. Yeah, so I I would really like to clarify that the city's just at the city's discretion.
Do you feel there needs to be some additional criteria in there? You know, in in addition to it meets the basic specifications, um, you know, what else, I guess what else would? It it checks all these boxes where it doesn't check the boxes we're not taking.
I think we we want all those boxes checked, but we still get to decide whether we want to take that on permanently or not. I think that's just the part where it's like where we get to decide whether we're ready to take on these roads or not. And if we are going to, these are the check box.
Okay.
Even.
Cause you meet them doesn't mean we're gonna, okay.
Yeah, I think even even beyond those the like physical requirements, the the fiscal health of the city could be or or I mean, there's a there's any other, any, all sorts of reasons that the city may not want to 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 take on a road.
Or if they're not a through street, if it's a dead end like subdivision. I don't think we need to put those in the code. We just have to.
Okay. I think that that was a great uh, question to bring up. Anything else in either four or five? Okay. Uh, historic preservation is fairly straightforward. Uh, what we did is we took everything from chapter six administration and procedures that was related to historic preservation. Um, it there is some procedural language in there, but a lot of it was standards and criteria for dedication, criteria for app uh, alteration and demolition. And so we've pulled that all into its own chapter um, to to speak to the those different elements. And we've provided some clarification on the difference between a local register, the state register and the national register. Your local landmark designation is only that local register piece. Um, a property owner could could be on all three. They could designate um, on the local register, they could designate themselves on the state register and on the national register. There's uh, different criteria on the state and national register and they get um, more um, stringent the the higher up you go. Um, there is some really great funding available at both the state and national level to keep the integrity of a home. Very, very specific criteria on that funding, but um, available nonetheless. We have worked with the historic preservation board on this section. Uh, I think we've been, it's been before them, I think, two or three times. Um, we had proposed some language that they pulled back a little bit on and kind of, we kind of went back and forth and found a happy medium. Um, the biggest thing is the certificate of alteration. We um, have added some uh, language in there to speak to. It's it's still uh, it's a voluntary process, you know, if you want to alter your home, but um, we have some additional language in there um, for what would what what you, what we would hope you would do if you're altering your property to allow the historic preservation board to weigh in on that. Similarly, with demolition permits, um, currently the code is um, it's very minimal in the demolition section and so we've added a little language in there to state if you um, want to demolish your property and it's on the local register, um, just giving the historic preservation board the opportunity to document that site before um, the resource is lost. So not necessarily prohibiting it, but just giving that option for a discussion and um, honestly, in some cases, I think people find they want to do something. Um, and they might not know that there's resources available that could help them ke- keep the home. Uh, so sometimes even running through this process, I've seen people say, oh, wait, maybe I don't want to totally demolish it. Maybe there's another option. So um, it just kind of uh, brings a little bit more awareness to the historic properties. Any questions on this section?
Yeah, I had a question about the um, uh, where was it? Seven oh four two B, which is the property owners adjacent uh, have their uh, the property owners adjacent to a historic property. Sorry, I'm, there we go. Property owners making alternate alterations or constructing new buildings adjacent to registered buildings, landmarks or districts or request to consult with the board prior to construction. I I think we, I think we should should strike that. I mean, we we don't have the ability. We have a height restriction already, so I it's not like we're building skyscrapers that block the view of something. Um, and I have, I just have the concern of you're now not just affecting the property right of the that specific property, but anything near it as well.
Yeah. I think that's a fair, fair thought. What are some other thoughts on that? Just requiring the owner of the historic property to go through this, but not the adjacent properties. Okay.
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
Perfect. We we will probably consult the historic preservation board, make sure there's no heartburn on their end, but I don't see any reason why. I feel like it must be. I don't remember adding that language, so.
Sorry, it's pretty, I mean, it's relatively soft anyway. It doesn't, it doesn't require. It's like, it's a may, not a shall kind of thing. I I sort of feel like it either should be a shall or it should be a nothing. And not, not in between. Yeah, well, and it and that's what the other thing I was gonna say is that like, at least in current practice, it's not happening.
Okay. Battery running low. Okay. Uh, we'll look into whether that was added, if it's existing and maybe just run it by, you know, the historic preservation board, make sure that's okay. I see no reason why we shouldn't remove that. All right.
The only other question I had is has the the state historic preservation reviewed it? I know that's a requirement of of us being of of our uh, historic preservation board being a certified local government.
I believe we had somebody from the state um, at one of our meetings, didn't we? From the CLG? Yeah. All right. Any other questions on chapters? There's just not much in that chapter compared to the previous one. That's why I giggle. All right. Module three is the the last module that we'll be drafting. Um, it's the administration and procedures. As we've talked about before, we'll be restructuring this whole chapter. There's a lot of language in there that's completely applicable still, just repackaging it a little bit about how how applications are received and processed. And how we're gonna repackage them is we have um, the first um, section will kind of be some general provisions, identifying who the review and decision-making authorities are. So there'll be a definition of city council, planning commission, all the different historic preservation board. Um, and kind of what their authority is within this code and how they're established, which oftentimes is in your municipal code, so we'll reference those sections where they're um, where these uh, boards are appointed. Um, there will be a review procedures summary table, which I'll show you in a second. Um, all the common review procedures, so you know, how an application is submitted, how that completeness review is is determined. Um, how the staff review process um, flows and then when a process and when it um, the criteria for uh, deciding if a application is ready for hearing or decision. All of that is going to go into that one section of common review procedures. Then when you get into the individual specific reviews um, procedures, you don't have to repeat that language over and over. It's you follow the standard review process and here are your criteria for approval and here's your submittal requirements. It's a pretty standard structure used in a lot of codes and it really helps clarify that whole section. And then the definitions we've been working on as we go. Um, we have pulled in all the standards of measurement of your existing code and been working on some graphics. So there's a new section in there that'll identify how you measure a setback, how you measure building height. All of that will be in your definitions. Um, rules of construction and then definitions of all the terms. We've identified quite a few terms specifically in um, chapter five, the site development standards. We've brought a whole bunch of new terms into your definitions. You know, high watermark. That's the only one that came off of the top of my head, but there's quite a few of those that as we've been going, we're saying that needs to be defined. And all of the uses are now defined in the definitions chapter as well. So um, or are they in the, in the uses chapter? We did put them in the uses chapter. Nancy's like Jen, we talked about this five hundred times, so please don't confuse me. And so as we've been going, we've been updating the, you know, adding new definitions in this last module. Once we get done with everything, we'll comb through the definitions one last time. Make sure any standards have been removed from them, uh, make sure, you know, that they're they're solid and and also I always double check um, to make sure they're actually in the code, because sometimes we've removed language that referenced a definition that is no longer needed. So so we'll clean up that chapter as well. These are all the applications that you currently have. There's a sub subdivision applications and that has multiple steps. A zone change, conditional use permit, site plan review, variance appeals, historic landmark designation, a land use code amendment and a comprehensive plan amendment. So this is kind of a a little bit of an outline of what that will look like. Some of these might not be in your code now. I'm not sure, but. And then this is um, what the um, what do we call it? The procedures table is going to look like. So this will take all the application procedures, all the review and decision-making authorities, whether you have to do a pre-application conference or not. Puts it all in one table at the front end of the document. It really helps applicants. It really helps staff. Primarily those two entities. Um, you guys will probably refer to it occasionally where you say, are we supposed to be having a hearing for this or not? Um, and so this will define which applications are um, approved by the planning director, which would be approved by planning commissioner, city council, and then uh, the appeal authority. This, the black is what's in your code currently for the most part. We had purple little O's and X's, but they weren't showing up at last night's meeting, so I changed them to yellow and now we can't see the yellow tonight, but they're very faint. Those are our proposed kind of changes to this. Um, we'll work through this with staff in detail and make sure we're getting all the right review authorities identified. And then we'll have a reference section, so you'll be able to click in there. So for preliminary plat, you'll be able to click in there and go straight to that procedure, you know, for each of those different sections. Um, so this is kind of a, I don't know, it's like the the measles chart for how you get through the applications in the city.
We're we're gonna look real hard.
The board of adjustment doesn't have the authority to hear a lot of the appeals from city council. Tho- those by statute have to go to uh, court. So we've got to re- relook at all that, uh, because that that kind of exceeds their authority and I don't think you want, the council, I would wouldn't imagine want their decisions being heard by the board of adjustment, who who would have the final say. Uh, the usually it's the elected body that is the final decision maker, so. They're more for exemptions and uh, appeals of staff decisions, but not not council decisions.
So that's what we're working on now. That'll be the next section that uh, we bring out. Uh, and and what we're planning to do, and I can talk about that in a minute, is is kind of bring this out with the rest of the sections that we've updated. So it's all one complete package, so.
I I'm just looking at plat amendment that.
It would depend on if there was any public dedications. So if there's any um, right-of-way dedication or any public land that's being dedicated, it would need to be signed by council. If not, if it's just adjusting a lot line and there's no new dedications or adjustments to the uh, dedications, then it wouldn't need to be signed. By you all. All right. Any other questions on this? Okay.
We did, you did talk to them about the conversation last night about changing all that?
Yeah, no, we can. We can absolutely talk about that.
So we did have a great conversation last night about moving down the level of approval. An example being site plans, which really a site plan for a commercial business, all we're doing is looking at setbacks and access and doesn't need all the code standards. It shouldn't have to really go to planning commission and city council. So there was a great discussion about maybe moving those down to the staff level with an appeal for up to planning commission or city council. It would significantly lower costs of development, not, maybe not significantly, really speed up the time for approvals. The code committee was way in favor of that, but I don't know how you guys are gonna feel about seeing less staff. But it's it's pretty, most communities are doing that now, just taking that, moving the decision board down and speeding up the development.
So and that would be only for things that meet the code or not conditional use permit.
Right.
But yeah, cause.
Not subdivisions, although some like up
So so if you did that, it would not come before any board at all.
Unless somebody accuses us.
Yeah. So for example, if it's a property that had to go through a rezone, maybe to rezone it to commercial or something, that rezone would come through, you know, the legislative bodies be approved and then the use, say it's a permitted use in that commercial zone and you've guys, you guys have already approved that based on this process, saying, yep, that's a permitted use. Then the only thing that really needs to be reviewed is that technical criteria. Have they met all the parking requirements, landscaping, fencing, building setbacks? And that's um, you know, really should be at that technical level, not elevated to a a public hearing. Um, one thing that we did talk about was having a a report out so staff could, you know, anytime any of these are getting approved, have a a report out at planning commissioner or city council, just saying, here are the ones we approved, here's, here's what they are.
Yeah, or my other thought along that line would be like um, they write a recommendation of approval and it's almost like a consent agenda.
It could be.
Sort of quickly take staff's recommendation. That's like code.
The problem with that is the delay. At one moment, if it goes to planning commission and city council, it's six weeks from when they submit the. from when they submit their application. So the idea is enough, you could then do, here's what we did, and give them a call-up period event in code. So staff approves it, sends the report, email, whatever, to City Council, Planning Commission, who have 10 days to call it out. I, I almost feel like it's dishonest to. Grocery store, it's a permitted use. What do you think to say about? It meets the goal, the use is allowed, the setback is not right. Now, with the land use criteria, nothing to say about really what we've made it go. You guys are uncomfortable with it.
I, I'm com, I mean, I'm comfortable with it. I think seeing less, particularly of things that you look at, it's black and white, it meets the, I think is beneficial. But you saying a grocery store, like something of that large a scale, that gives me a little bit of pause on that, of like, of like having some kind of threshold size of.
Be careful. If it's a permitted use, or permitted use, it's additional.
Or, yeah.
Yeah, all sorts of things, or a wall, or whatever, you know, make that.
There was a con, I'm sorry, go.
Go ahead.
There was a contractor at our meeting last night who made a really good point. He says if he has all of his ducks in a row, he submits it to the city, and they have 90 days. He says within a couple of weeks, he's got everything back, because everything's been submitted properly. But now, he has to wait on the Planning Commission, which only meets once a month. Then he has to get on the agenda, if he can get on the agenda, which is another two weeks. So it's setting him back two months, whereas it should be a, a three-week process.
I guess that I'm just hesitant to not have some involvement of, like, a representative body. And that's mostly thinking, like, protectively of the city and staff. I think there's a reason things go for review. And so I hear what everyone is saying about, like, shortening it, which is why I think maybe putting it as like a recommendation for approval or a consent agenda type of thing, where it's not such a big deal, but I just, as someone who is staff at a government agency and technically reviews stuff, I would be really nervous, even if it did meet all the criteria, if there wasn't kind of that higher level rubber stamp, so to speak.
Could it go to just planning and zoning and not council? When we take out one of them?
Yeah, I mean, I think that would be fine. I just think someone, one of us should look at it, and even if it is just kind of a cursory thing.
I think the ti, I think the timeline is the compelling piece there, and that's, I mean, that's where the cost is for the, for the developer is in, is in the additional timeline.
I mean, some people might just say that's how business, that's the cost of doing business within regulation.
It i, it is, but I guess that's why I am wondering more about maybe pushing some other things into conditional uses or thresholds over a certain size becomes an automatic conditional use. But if you're building a duplex, I, I don't think either you or I need to, either the count, Planning and zoning or council really needs to see it if it fits the, if it fits the code.
Right now, the threshold's set at five. Staff can't agree with it, or it's, or it's somewhere in certain.
What would that look like for commercial?
Maybe you do square footage?
Mm-hmm. Oh, you could do square footage.
The code right now has this scare that if it's a flat plan, paper, paper, I think it's, or it's quarter, I can't remember, at a certain size of parcel, it stops at the planning. And doesn't go on to the. I've, we've only used it once.
The other thing I've seen in some communities is a minor site plan and a major site plan. So even if it is a permitted use, if it's above a certain size or a cer, certain threshold, it's a major site plan, and that could go just to Planning Commission.
And that's what we're kind of doing.
Yeah.
Well, maybe you could.
Maybe codifying that true minor-major.
So we had a, it was a, I think it was formerly a dentist's office, and they wanted to turn it into a vision office, maybe vice versa. Oh, okay. And really, you know, there was a lot at stake, funding lined up, and being able to bring in the construction crew that they had, and it was really minor, what they were doing was just an addition, but they were changing some parking and some things like that, and we were able to just bring it to P and Z for approval. But, you know, I guess that's what we're asking you to, to consider is the, you know, that adds to the length of time that a developer, you know, like, trying to get everything in line, and if it fits the code, does it need to go another six weeks for those levels of approval?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think if it fits the code and the code's clear, I think it certainly would be worthwhile moving those thresholds up, whether, I mean, I, I don't know exactly where you try to draw those lines, but if, if you, staff can already approve, did you say you can approve up to a tri, a triplex? So, I mean, if you could move that up to four or five, I don't think that that would be unreasonable, and then set some sort of square footage threshold for, for a commercial to do the same. I don't think that would be unreasonable.
Okay, good. Was there anything else? I think that was the main one that we talked about last night. I guess you, you were there too, Dennis. Did you have any, anything else that we needed to bring forward?
I, actually, I have one other question on that still. So redevelopment of existing buildings where there's no structural change, but maybe a use is changing and it's a permitted thing, what is, how does that work at the moment? And?
Now?
Yeah.
Now, it's pretty complicated. There's a list of criteria on if certain things change. At that point, it has to go through the full site plan review, or if they don't change, it doesn't happen. So it has to be a permitted use. Here, remember, if it's the access, point of access changes, if the new use requires more parking, and if it's louder, gustier, smellier, you know, more impact on the neighbors, then it has to go.
The, what's the subdivision you were just mentioning?
Southern Bluffs.
Southern Bluffs, their clubhouse, wasn't that a, it was a change of use?
They wanted to put a real estate office in.
Because that could, that could be really beneficial for, I, I'm thinking for like central business district and, and downtown business, that maybe it's a real estate office for a year and a half, and then they move on, and then a restaurant wants to move in, simplifying the process of switching to uses below certain thresholds could be beneficial in.
It'd be great to clarify a lot.
And frankly, though, there are some, you know, building switches hands, and then the new use is something, you know, that does intensify the impact on neighbors, and I think honestly, it is, it is helpful to be able to say, okay, you have a change of use here, and we need to mitigate for that. So, yeah, in some cases, yeah, it does, I think it makes sense to bring it through to P and Z and council.
Perfect. So I think what I heard out of that is maybe look at the thresholds. It might be a minor versus major site plan, or it just might be a trigger point that says below this threshold, staff can review, above that, we feel more comfortable coming to at least P and Z. And maybe even look at some of the use, look at the use table again in concert with the application procedures to see if there's anything that isn't conditional that we feel needs to be elevated through that full process. I think, does that summarize pretty well, kind of? Okay.
And there could be an appeals process, so if somebody.
Correct, yep. Yeah. And we can specify this in the code or leave it out. It's always an option if staff is, gets an application that meets all the thresholds for staff review, and they feel uncomfortable, for whatever reason, they can always elevate that as well. They would need to be very clear with the applicant early in the process, but they, they have that option.
Does the, you, you mentioned a neighbor. Does the appeals process work in both directions, or is it? I was thinking of an appeals process as the applicant, not, not other parties, so.
Yeah, it's usually affected entities is how they define the appeals, so.
It could be a neighbor appealing to.
All right. Anything else on those, the chapters we talked about, the application procedures? I know we're at two hours here, so. Great, so next steps, we will, there weren't a whole lot of comments in Module Two, which was the four, five, and seven. We'll go back and address the few items we talked about tonight, which were also, seemed to be very much in alignment with, with what we talked about last night with our working group. We will, we've already started to kind of get into Module Three with that table. We'll continue working on that over the next couple of months. And then what we're really hoping for at the moment is to bring out that last module combined with the first, so pretty much the entire code. With the first two modules will be pretty well refined, and the last module will be the first time people are seeing that. Bring that all out in mid-December, hopefully. Probably do another joint work session, open house kind of series like we've been doing this week. And at that point, if everyone feels comfortable, I think it's going to go full public. We've been releasing these to the public on the website in small increments, so that would really open that full public review before the hearings. So we're, we're getting down to the, the last kind of pieces of this. And just a quick reminder, like I said, we had our open house today, this afternoon at the chamber, and we have a second one tomorrow night here, so that's October 30th from five to seven here in council chambers. That's open to the public, it's a very, there's no, there's no presentation, you can come anytime within that time period, and it's, it's just an opportunity for folks to come see a lot of what we've presented tonight. There's boards that just show those graphics and kind of what the changes are in the code, and give people an opportunity to ask us questions, or even propose, sometimes people bring forward, well, how would this apply to this situation that I'm having? And it, it helps us kind of think through it, and helps people understand where we're going with the code. That's all we have, unless you have any other questions or thoughts.
I really like the graphics.
Thank you.
I think they're, the visuals really help, so thank you.
I, I, I do want to put a plug in for Logan and Simpson. In the committee meetings, we'll make something, and it, it's just somebody throw something out there, and they hear, because I see it the next time we have a meeting, they discuss it, so thank you guys.
You're very welcome.
And I, I think you're doing a great job. Appreciate it.
Thank you. You guys are doing an awesome job, too, guiding us and getting us steered in the right direction for your community, so I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. All right, this meeting's over, I guess.
Isn't that where you do the mic drop, peace out?